The time is now five o'clock. I'm going to call to order the Committee of the May 19th, 2025. Clerk Boe, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Bremo.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Vanoglu.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Eight members present.
Thank you. Next, we are on to the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 12 minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. If you have a comment on one of our agenda items, please come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. And can you please state your name for the record?
Loretta Stanaway, I wanted to talk today about your meeting with the goal of reviewing the ethics standards and having people properly trained. I've mentioned this before up here, but I'd like to mention it again in light of this topic. I think it would be very wise if the ethics rules were revised so that it requires anyone who needs to file an affidavit of disclosure to upgrade those and refile those anytime their responsibilities change or they're promoted. And there should also be a requirement that if they have any partners, silent or otherwise, they have to name the fact that they have partners. And if they're not silent partners, they have to be named on the affidavit. And then second, on the issue of the G resolution to oppose a liquor license, I agree with you folks, that should be opposed. And I hope you have the success with that that you had with the other two. Thank you.
Brad Dre, Lansing firefighters, Local 421. I come today to, first of all, thank council and the powers that be that we took a look at the budget, we found some money so that we were able to start addressing our staffing issues. We are very, very happy that we've started taking some steps, taking the right steps to so that we can start addressing our staffing issues within the Lansing Fire Department. It's long overdue. The can's been kicked down the road, but we seem to have gotten a handle on it. And we're moving in the right direction. And I hope in future years that we will be able to continue to have these good discussions, a seat at the table, and that we can have a long-term plan in place that we can continue to address the staffing issues of the Lansing Fire Department and adequately staff us to reflect the call volume and workload within the City of Lansing. I know that there's been a lot of talk on the retired healthcare that's hit the media along. We're looking forward to maybe having more discussions with council, city administration, and maybe looking to some sort of creative solution that we could possibly help ease some of the burden to these retirees that were just informed here within the last few days that their healthcare premium sharing or their costs will be going up significantly this year. Local 421 looks forward to having these discussions and we hope that something positive will come from this. So, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move along to item five, discussion action. The first item up is going to be B, an ordinance re-adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. As this council recalls, this is a yearly exercise that we do to make sure that we don't have any lapses in our city ordinances, as happened prior in the past. So, is there any questions or concerns on this? Okay, seeing none. Vice President Carter?
Yes, I would make a motion for the ordinance of re-adopting the codified ordinances.
Okay, proper motion in place. With no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to item C, which is a resolution for annual training requirement for all boards and commissions, Training on Ethics Ordinance, Conflict of Interest, and Open Meetings Act. Any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no takers, Vice President Carter?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the annual training requirement, that all city boards and commissions, Training on the Ethics Ordinance, Conflicts of Interest, and the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, proper motion in place. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to discussion fiscal year 2526 budget policies. We went through these and cleaned them up. And these are the cleaned up budget policies that we have before us. Is there any further discussion or questions on these? See no takers, so that is a discussion item. So, we will go ahead and move on to item E, which is going to be the fiscal year 2526 budget and policies. If you have an amendment, now would be the time. Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. So, I have amendment here. Basically, this amendment proposes the addition of two firefighters for a total of three new positions in fiscal year 2026, one per 24-hour shift, and the creation of a legislative analyst position to strengthen the council's capacity to evaluate and respond to city legislative matters. The funding plan utilizes a projected $100,000 increase in statutory revenue sharing based on the state's May 2025 consensus revenue estimates. It also reallocates $250,000 from the contingency fund originally set aside by Mayor Shore. This result is balanced in a balanced proposal with no net impact on the general fund. Total expenditures of $350,000 are allocated as followed. City council personnel, $130,000. Fire personnel, $220,000. The amendment enhances both public safety staffing and legislative oversight while maintaining a neutral effect on the general fund balance. With that, I'd move the budget amendment.
We have a budget amendment that has been properly moved. Do we have discussion on this item? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I kind of feel like we're in the federal government with the combined, you know, fire and legislative, so different departments in the same amendment. It's not like a deal breaker. But my question is, similar to the police, how many vacancies are there currently with the fire department? How many are expected next year with retirements? And what's that total? Are we adding two positions to, again, an already multiple open positions? You know, nothing against, we do need more fire and police on the roads. We have funded positions. So, my question is, is how many currently funded but vacant positions are there with the fire department, if anybody knows?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we are actively recruiting, both putting young people in the academy, working with the school district. We are actively bringing in folks from other departments. We expect to be full. And adding these, we will continue to hire. We've got our own training in addition to the fire academies. But we, my expectation is we'll be full. We are very familiar with, well, we are generally familiar with who's going to retire. We know who's retirement eligible, who hits the 25 years. If they decide to stay longer, great. But we have an idea of how many. So, we, like police, for both police and fire, we look at the total number. We look at, can we front-load by hiring more? We're actually hiring 15 additional firefighters with grants. So, the intention is to hire as many as we can get, as quick as we can get. And then with the extra 15, it would reduce by attrition, although we'd like to do our best to just keep those numbers. So, as you heard in public comment, there'll be three more added to our ranks this year with this amendment. We added two last year, and we certainly want to do our best to increase. But it's our intention to be filled and to front-load if we know that there are retirements coming. Can I guarantee you? I cannot. But it is our intention to fill every spot that council allocates.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, that it's the intent to fill. And it's been, no offense, the intent to fill police and fire for at least the last eight years, there's been vacancies, seven years, as long as I've been here. So, I guess I still am not sure about how many vacancies there are. I know there's written down somewhere, and not necessarily intent to fill them. So, that's one question. And I know we're not on police because this is an amendment, but it's the same thing. We have the vacancies. So, when there's a retirement, it just means that there's another vacancy. It doesn't, so front-loading for retirement, you're still going to get those open spots. Have we, do we know the amount of vacant positions? I know Jake does.
Jake, do you happen to have that number?
Allow me a moment to pull up the last quarter's report.
Okay.
Elizabeth O'Leary is watching, and she said she can come up.
What was that?
It said Elizabeth O'Leary was watching, and she said she can come up also. So, if she has those numbers, I assume she can bring them as well.
Okay. Do we want to put a pin in your question, why they're pulling up their computer, and see if anyone else has got? Okay. Councilman Spatafor?
As long as Councilmember Jackson's okay with that.
Yeah.
I just, I'm excited to support this amendment. Thank you, Councilmember Garza. One thing I do want to highlight during this process is, if you all recall, last year, we sent a list of priorities to the administration for things that we think are important. Over the last several months, we've heard, weeks, months, we've heard from department heads and department officials and folks throughout the city about what is needed. I would strongly encourage us, as we go through the next round of production of budget priorities, to reflect on what was heard and put a lot of thought into how those priorities are shaped, because this is very important, what we're doing tonight. But it was not in the budget priorities. And that, I think, is important to note, because a lot of the things that were in the priorities did make it to the budgets. So, that could be something to think about. I think it's great we're doing this tonight. This is not meant as a criticism. But I think as we look at the budget priority process, maybe the Ways and Means Committee can reflect over the next few months before we send that list back to the administration in October for next year's fiscal year two.
Right. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah. And Elizabeth, I believe that you might have the answer to the question from Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So, the last vacancy report we produced had three fire vacancies. This can be a moving target as people are going through the academy and through all those processes because now we require people to have a paramedic license. And we put them through the training. So, a lot of times, people will come with no certifications at all. So, we'll put them through EMT school, fire one and two, and then we're going to put them on to paramedic school. We just had three paramedics start through our lateral process, which was very successful. So, with the additional three, that would leave us to six vacancies, which we're prepared to get that posted as soon as possible. And also, I think the last time I checked with the chief, there was three to four projected retirements for this year. So, I think we're sitting in a pretty good place as far as the vacancies. I do understand what the IFF president is saying, like they're at critical need for paramedics. And so, we understand that, but that's based upon the vacancies. If you want me to speak to police, we have 25 current sworn vacancies. Five were sworn in last Monday. We have 16 in the vetting process. And there are three projected retirements for the remainder of the year. I think one was on Friday, actually, I went to the retirement ceremony. And we're currently recruiting laterals from a neighboring jurisdiction.
We won't say which one. Councilmember Jackson, you've still got the floor?
Thank you for answering the question. So, I can support this amendment. It's at least closer with the fire department vacancies. And I think that, you know, when the mayor puts forth the budget and us council people have a chance to make amendments, really, we're only touching like way less, way less than 1% of that whole budget. So, you know, with that, I would like to support my colleagues when possible. And this comes in good faith, and there could be the stars line up where these vacancies might be filled, including these new ones. So, I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other councilmember comments on this? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, passes unanimously. Do we have any other amendments? Councilmember Jackson?
This amendment is for a full-time position, a single full-time position to go in the Sustainability Department. This person would be working under the Sustainability Manager. And I guess I can briefly read these three paragraphs I have here. "This Sustainability Specialist Position is a full-time position to help assist with the work being done in the Sustainability Department. The Sustainability Specialist would serve under the Sustainability Manager and assist with the daily workload, including but not limited to grant writing, implementation of existing and new programs, including the Climate Action Plan, recycling and landfill management, and energy efficiency programs within the city. The Sustainability Specialist would help enable the Sustainability Department. To continue to increase savings for Lansing, these savings were discussed by the Sustainability Manager in an EDI committee meeting this year and during the Public Service Budget Hearing." Basically, we've heard the need for years now that we have basically a lot of things that could be done in our Climate Action Plan, including how we use and monitor and report our landfill waste. There's been reports that we're putting in the wrong stuff, which is creating a lot of methane, which is bad for the environment. Also, there's been described needs in that department for continued grant writing. They are very successful, that department, in receiving many grants that don't even require matches, and has brought in money in the city that way. We've also heard in committee and in the committee as a whole during the budget hearing, that this position has saved the city thousands and thousands of dollars. I didn't have the exact number today. I probably should have. But if I recall from Lori, it's in the hundreds of thousands. If I recall from Jake, he's not exactly sure, but can confirm it is thousands of thousands. And I think this position, although it does come from line item sources, it still would bring in revenue to the city. There's also like how we do our recycling program, and the amount of commodity or recycling waste that's put out is not enough for what our contract is, and we are in risk of losing that. An additional person would help with that program. There's also a program where the city has collected food scraps, which is used for composting. That pilot program was a big success in one of the neighborhoods, but only limited because of the staff and the capabilities of the department. A person would help with that as well. So, basically, I'm asking that this amendment allow for one full-time person. And again, I try to think like where are there blind spots in the budget? Because again, the budget covers public safety. It covers roads and sidewalks. And in fact, that's always a talking point, but I just don't feel like it covers anything with our Sustainability Department. And that's why I am again asking for this position. The total is $130,000. The administration, or excuse me, Jake helped as far as the numbers, as far as how much it would take for the full-time position, and where funds could come from. And that's why you see it listed as it is there. And I would move the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this amendment that's been moved? And I have a question for the councilmen. We just used the $67,000 that you have here on that first line. That was part of the $250,000?
Okay. So, is that an exhaustive, you said it's part of the $250,000 from the previous amendment, $350,000. But does that mean that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, does that mean that there is not $67,000 from that same fund?
From that pot of money, correct. Jake, is that fund specifically just the $250,000?
Yes. So, the general fund contingency line, that was just up to $250,000. And so, in order to make this budget amendment work, it would instead be a draw from fund balance or draw from another expenditure source.
In the current fund balance, our rainy day fund, what percentage is that at?
Approximately 14.2%.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jake, is that inclusive of the $250,000?
Correct.
Okay, so without that, it's lower?
Yes. So, right now, with the changes that you have proposed, the budget is balanced exactly revenues equalling expenditures without any change in fund balance. This will, if you decide to draw any further from fund balance, that will be a reduction. But you are currently above the 12% minimum by about 2% of expenditures.
So, we are at 14.2 after the 250?
Correct.
Well, I guess I didn't plan for the First Amendment, you know, to take from the same source. I guess Jake, if you don't mind helping, but unless the easiest and best way to make up the funds is from the fund balance, unless, you know, someone more versed with the line items could come up with that remainder from a different place, if it would please counsel.
Councilmember Jackson, I've appreciated your commitment to this. And actually, this was one of those things that did make it into the budget priorities. Have you talked to the folks since they've begun the hiring process for the, I think there's three staffers in addition to the 2.5 we've already got from Bloomberg?
Sure. So, yes, the Bloomberg three temporary people, they have a limited scope of what they can do. And in our committee meeting, the Sustainability Manager spoke to that and said they will be helpful on some things, but the full scope of the need is beyond what they can do. And that's why I asked like, what can we do to help your department to continue the work? What's the one thing, even with the Bloomberg people, what's the one thing that you could use? And she said a full-time person would be the best addition
I'm going to pass the gavel.
President Cost?
Thank you. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to use $67,000 from the 14.2% rainy day fund that we have. That is 2.2%, as I understand it, over the minimum 12, to fund this position.
Councilman Brown?
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Vice President Carter. Jake, you indicated that we're at 14.2, 2% over. What is the dollar amount of the 2%, please?
So, right now, our total expenditures are about $173.1 million unrestricted. Fund balance is at $22.8 million. There's a calculation of excluding transfers out, which is approximately $6 million. But this number would fall well within that.
Councilman Garza?
Thank you, Vice President Carter. I guess my question to this is, you know, I want to support this as well, Councilman Jackson. I appreciate you, the work you put into this. However, the major streets and local street fund, would we be able to also utilize that 14.2% and not take out of the local street and major street fund? As I would like to see as much money go to our local streets and major streets as possible.
Aside from the legislative decisions involved, I would wait and see what is going to happen with the state as far as their funding of major and local roads. I don't, I wouldn't necessarily recommend preempting their efforts on that.
Sorry, I think you, excuse me, I think you misunderstood. I'm just, I'm saying, instead of using these line items from the local and major street, the 3,000 and the 4,000, are we allowed to utilize that 14.2% as well?
So, the transfer out for major and local streets, that is more or less restricted funding for those purposes drawn from the property tax mileage. So, you wouldn't be able to utilize those as a source of revenue for this.
Okay, I guess I need some clarification then, because...
I had Councilmember Brown and then Councilmember Spatafor?
Thank you, Vice President Carter. Yes, Jake, that's why I was trying to get the clarification on the dollar amount to Councilman Garza's point as well. The Councilmember Jackson budget amendment, it indicates major streets operating for, excuse me, major streets, appropriation of fund balance 4,000, 3,000 for local streets and sewer, 14,000. Do you have that in front of you, Jake?
No, not in front of me immediately.
Would you like me to pass this to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Nevermind.
Okay. So, that's what we're speaking to. And so, my initial question was asking, what is that 2% over dollar amount? Because I was going to concur with the same thing in saying, instead of taking it from streets, is this something that we could just, you know, do total? But 2% could be $10,000 or it could be $4 million?
Of our expenditures, it's more in the millions range. Yeah, so, this would be Is less than 1%.
So, it's possible then to use those funds for this budget amendment instead of the major streets, local streets, sewer, trash, and recycle?
Yes. So, the structure of this amendment, as it's designed, is the allocation of this position across the activities that it is involved in. So, that is why there's about $130,000 of cost, and it's distributed across multiple funds. So, that's a complicated nature of how the fund is organized or how the position is organized and affects many different areas of the city. And so, overall, the cost of the general fund is $67,000 that you're looking at. The other costs are proposed to come from the respective fund balances of their various funds already.
Correct. And that's what we're looking at in this budget amendment that is identified in. So, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Garza, is what he's asking, I think along with myself, is instead of using, taking money from these line items and these accounts, is it possible to take the money from that 2% that would be more than the 60,000 or 70,000 here?
I would say that would be a proposal to increase the cost of the general fund. And so, I wouldn't necessarily be supportive of that personally. But it's up to you what you want to propose and decide.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Thank you. So, I have a concern about what we're discussing here. When I, I believe when we first saw the budget, it was... When I, I believe when we first saw the budget, it was presented to us that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency was estimated to be ongoing dollars. I'm looking to Jake for a yes or a no.
Yes, so this is, when we proposed the budget, it was a revenues and expenditures, including contingency, equaled each other, that, that giving two hundred fifty thousand for City Council to either allocate or reserve for future contingencies.
Okay. So, that would be ongoing dollars. That means every year, we can expect that pending a change in our revenue. When we move money out of fund balance, it's savings account dollars, and we're now looking to fund a position entirely on borrowed money that's been sitting in a savings account, not revenue we can count on. That doesn't set well with me, if we are gonna look at next year's budget, then, starting out in structural deficit beyond considering other increases that will come a long ways, with other personnel costs and other costs for doing business. So that, that will be, appreciative, problem solving at the table, President Kost, but I would not support that as a friendly amendment.
All right, I'm gonna pass the gavel back to President Kost.
Okay, so, no, no, no. So, I will...
Councilman Brown?
Thank you so much. Is, is that something, is that something, Councilman Kost, that, based on understanding what Councilman Spatafor is stating, I know that we have a lot of different, as we went through all the hearings, different departments with increase in labor costs, is that, you know, we, of course, we understand inflation, three to five percent, some departments are a little higher, is that something that we would want to look at versus just the general fund? Instead of giving additional raise, I think we were at one hundred and sixty-five million last year, now we're at one hundred and seventy-three million, and most of it is in increases? I don't know, just a question, a thought.
Council, President Kost?
Yes, so I think a lot of those, those increases came from increased assessments on, on property taxes and other revenue streams. There were increases, I think, on almost all of them in this year's budget, which accounts for the increase in the, the spending to match our expenditures. And I have to agree with Councilman Spatafor, because the sixty-seven thousand isn't gonna get us there with these others, so I will withdraw my friendly amendment on this, because it, it just, the math is not gonna work, and I can't take money off of the major and local street funds.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. So, we're talking about can't take money out of the major street funds, that's four thousand dollars out of this one hundred and thirty thousand dollar position, and the local street funds is three thousand, so we're talking about a total of seven thousand dollars out of all these hundreds of thousands, and ultimately, millions of dollars. And again, we can fund positions like police and fire, where we still got them, so that, you know, we put in more positions that'll be vacant, we're just using up the money that could go for another place, like the sustainability manager assistant, that would help bring money into the city. And it's nothing against your amendment or anything, that's fine, it's just that we're talking about four and three thousand potentially holding it up, when we're comfortable, again, just for the sake of putting it out there in the name, funding more positions. So, I guess I would submit that if we can't find any better ideas, I would still move this forward. I would ask that you guys allow four thousand and three thousand dollars to come out of the streets and the sidewalks, knowing that this position will bring in more than that money to the city. So, yeah, four thousand dollars for a sidewalk is almost grinding off a half an inch of one little street sidewalk piece, that's about how far that'll go, so I would ask that you guys just consider it. And once this does pass, if it passes, next year, the mayor, when he does his budget, it'll probably be this year, whenever he does it, he can make the adjustments necessary to accommodate, or make the proposals in his budget necessary to accommodate. And I did reach out to the mayor well in advance of this, asking about this position too. And, you know, to his credit, he says that money's tight, everybody wants positions, you know, see what he can do, you can always bring forward an amendment. I bring forward the amendment with Jake helping, thank you Jake, I know it's not your job fully, but he helped find potential places for the money. As you know, we lost our internal auditor recently. So with that, I guess I'll rest my comments for now.
Do we have any further comments on the original amendment from Councilman Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So I guess I'm still needing some clarification, because regardless if we use that four thousand and three thousand, wouldn't we still be looking at trying to find another revenue stream other than the sixty-seven thousand?
Yes, yes. Councilman Spatafor.
And even that, considering that barrier, sixty-three thousand of the one hundred and thirty thousand is a draw from one-time funding again, so this entire position is funded on one-time money. I think it's very good position to look at. We have two positions in the city already working on this, a contracted part-time position, and three full-time staffers coming in from Bloomberg to support. So, like police and fire, we have some vacancies still to fill on this, so I appreciate Director Welch's comments, but we're looking at creating an operational position with one-time money in this amendment, and I still think that's not a great path to go forward, that the difference between this and what we did in fire, was those were ongoing operational revenues.
Councilman Garza still has the floor.
I'm all set.
Okay, Councilman Brown, Jackson.
The difference between this and the fire is that the fire amendment went first, and asked for the full contingency of the little bit of slush fund that the City Council has to try to, you know, carve something out, that's, the mayor's like, here, City Council, have this quarter of a million dollars out of this whole thing to try to work your guys' priorities out. So, we have a priority that came with fire, I mean, I guess it wasn't on the policies, but we heard from the public and the, and the department chief, we know that fire stuff is a priority. Okay, so that's one thing. And then we had a second amendment that came from another priority that's been on the list, the environmental stewardship. So, it's not that, that this amendment, you know, is coming from unfunded money, it's just because five minutes earlier, all the free funding money went to three new positions, two of which are gonna add to the vacancy factor. So, I don't know, I don't know if we can revisit the first one, and then say, one fire department, one fire officer to go to the vacancy factor, so that we have a little bit of money to do budget amendments? But, you know, I, I see how it is, I get it, and I'll rest again.
And, Councilman Jackson, I would say, I would say this, that one of the concerns that I guess I would have with this position, I, I know we all care about the environment. I think one of the difficulties is, when you have someone that's going to be doing grant writing, you know, within your definition here for climate action plan, I, I don't have a whole lot of hope with Washington DC that there's gonna be a lot of clean energy grants coming down for the next few years. So I, with how uncertain grant, the possibility of grants could be, I'd be concerned that we would make, make this position, and then a lot of the, the clean initiatives that we're trying to do would, would dry up. I also think that perhaps there could be a conversation with HR as we're looking at our vacancy factor list, and perhaps there's a position that has been on that list for some time that they don't intend to fill, that we could use in this role, rather than taking money out of, just spitballing ideas here, taking money out of the general fund reserve.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that. So, HR will say that it's not their job to decide what gets filled, their job is to try to fill them all, it's City Council's job to fund the positions, or all that other jazz, but, so, you know, asking HR which random position might not get funded, that's kind of my rationale for why do we keep funding police positions, when they're all, you know, all these vacancies, why don't we use that money, instead of getting new positions to add to the list, why don't we just use that money for stuff? So that's why I usually vote no for a lot of things, and probably will again this year, just because I am tired of us adding positions just to say, I'm tough on crime, or look what we're doing to make the streets safer, we, we are putting police on the streets. With our budget, we're adding X amount of new positions, but really, we're not when it doesn't get funded, so we can, I do appreciate that idea, because I've had that idea in the past, it's just that HR's not gonna be the one to do it, it's either us right now, or maybe the mayor through the next, next year's budget.
Councilmember, oh, he, I'm sorry, well, he had passed. Yeah, okay. Councilmember Palivonoglu.
Thank you, President Kost. Quite the discussion over this particular amendment. I, I understand and appreciate many of my colleagues' opinions with using one-time money to fund a position. And, and while I do appreciate that perspective, I see that Councilmember Jackson is attempting to build capacity here, much like we're attempting to build capacity with the fire department, build capacity for council staff. If this position is proven effective, moving forward, say there is money for one year for someone to go in and, and really prove and generate dollars for the city, and, and do this good work as a sustainability specialist, I would like to find a way to be able to do that. If I'm just doing very simple math, there, there was an amendment that was posed to, you know, utilize funds from the rainy day fund, if you look at the sixty-seven thousand dollars plus the other seven thousand related to roads, that total would be seventy-four thousand dollars from that one particular account. I do think that sewer, trash, and recycling are directly related to a sustainability professional, and so I wouldn't consider, you know, asking for, for any of those dollars to be moved, but I, I can understand where Councilman Jackson is coming from, trying to build this capacity, because we may have some employees who are here on a Bloomberg grant, but grants are limited, and in the next few years, we will need a sustainability specialist to help carry forward the mission of that department, and I think that this could be a start to that. I don't recall where we were with the amendment versus friendly amendment process, I don't know if you removed that.
I withdrew.
You withdrew, so if I am able to make a friendly amendment at this time, I would like to make a friendly amendment in the amount of seventy-four thousand dollars, from within that additional two point two percent that was discussed previously, and be supportive of this particular budget amendment, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Jackson, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, especially if it's gonna sway some people to support it, so it sounds like the general fund, without any contingency dollars, is not a starter, so I would support the friendly amendment.
Okay. So we have a friendly amendment. Do we have any further discussion? Councilman Brown?
Can I have a little bit of clarification? So are we saying the sewer fund, trash fund, recycle fund, fourteen thousand and twenty-one thousand, twenty-one thousand? Or, I heard you say, of the general contingency as well? So I'm trying to understand what we...
So, and I'm sorry, so, looking at the document, the top three lines, those top three dollar amounts, are the dollar amounts I was speaking of, to, instead of using those three lines of funding, and that's roughly seventy-four thousand dollars.
Perfect, thank you.
And to be clear, what we're looking at here would be seventy-four thousand dollars from our general fund reserve, fourteen thousand from the sewer fund, twenty-one thousand from the trash fund, twenty-one thousand from the recycling fund. Just so everyone is on the same page here with this budget amendment. And City Attorney Venker, the recycling fund, because that is a fee enterprise fund, is it permissible to use the money this way?
Right. I, I want to clarify one thing, and I'm hoping Jake can answer this question, because I, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, that there could be an issue with that, but I think, if I'm understanding correctly, when I'm looking at the proposed budget amendment, all, as written, there's a draw from general fund contingency, and then the next four lines on the top row are all draws from fund balance into major streets, local streets, sewer fund, trash fund, recycling fund. Is that correct?
Yes, so that all represents activities of the sustainability analysts, so they're looking at areas of sustainability all across the city, across all functions, that includes road operations, as it relates to how much salt we use, sewer fund operations, trash and recycling for their respective waste reductions and reuse.
Right. I just, I just want the clarification that these are not draws from the enterprise funds, these are draws from fund balance into those funds?
Wrong, those are draws from their respective fund balances across all those uses.
Those are their fund balances?
That's after...
Thank you, okay. Then, to your question, the, if there's a justification that can be drawn, and I think that's what Jake has been talking about, if there's justification that can be drawn that the recycling fund benefits from the expenditure of this money in furtherance of recycling, then it's permissible?
Okay.
Right, and the same would apply for any of the enterprise funds, so sewer, trash, streets, et cetera.
Okay. Is there any further debate on this amendment? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, and if we pass this today, and there's general fund or rainy day fund money, again, there's still gotta be a balanced budget next year, the mayor's gonna have to do a little extra work with Jake and everybody to either accommodate this, or kick it out and have its rationale for the reasons why this is not gonna be good. This is something that we want, I mean, council wants, and again, it's gonna be up to the mayor to veto it or reconcile it next year. And again, you all will be here for the most part, and you all will hear him come and either say, this position's here, or, or when they do, any positions leaving, they could be like, the, the first analyst, analyst position's gone because XYZ reasons. So, there are, even if it passes, it's not the end of the world, it will be reconciled one way or the other, because as you know, when we started here, however many years ago, the budget was like two hundred and eighteen million, and now it's however many more than that. So it, it's gonna change, every year it changes, and it's up to everybody to reconcile it. We pass this, it's legal, it's, it's reconciled, and the position will be able to get to work, hopefully sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk Boe, could you do the roll call vote on this?
On the motion for the amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Garza?
No.
Councilmember Spatafor?
No.
Councilmember Palivonoglu?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kost?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries six-two.
Okay. So, with that amendment, are there any further amendments? Okay, seeing none, Vice President Carter?
All right, I will move, make a motion to approve the amended budget with the two amendments, one, the two, adding the two firefighters, and what are for a total of three positions, and to create a legislative analysis for stronger attention to impact the city legislative proposal, and then also the amendment for the sustainability specialist position. programs for the city.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose? Passes unanimously. All right. Budget season 2025, 2026 is over. F, discussion, this is a hearing we received from the Liquor Control Commission. If this council remembers correctly, we had sent, the community along with city council had sent several letters opposing these two liquor stores, one on Michigan Avenue, I believe it was 1910 East Michigan Avenue, and one at 4700 Pleasant Grove Avenue. The Liquor Control Board did deny the liquor licenses at these two locations, and I believe that the owner is going to be appealing that. So, this is simply a discussion on how this council continues to feel on the situation with the appeal in place, and if we want to stand by this resolution, this is a discussion. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I, as a matter of practice, would like to generally stand behind something we already discussed and voted on. I don't think that there's anything from somebody going to appeal, or the fact that it was initially denied that would change wanting to stand behind it, just for discussion purposes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would agree with Councilmember Jackson, but I also would add that, moving forward, I think if we are to revisit additional transfer, liquor transfers, that we keep consistency. I know that there have been other conversations of other transfers and adding liquor licenses, so, based off of the information that was shared at the time that this was declined, I think we should keep the consistency within the council's decision.
And, so the public's aware, this is, you know, we wanted to push this information out Tuesday, June 17th, at 1:00 PM, that is the appeal hearing. If folks want to join, they prefer the Zoom. There, within our packet is the Zoom link, and the conference call number and code, if you prefer to do it that way. But, you know, we're basically sharing out, you know, where the situation stands with these. So, if we don't have any further discussion on this, Councilmember Palavaglu?
Thank you. I just, just for further clarification, it's my understanding that during the course of this hearing, the city of Lansing doesn't necessarily have an opportunity to speak. You may, anyone may log in via Zoom to view the hearing, the appellate hearing, but we don't necessarily have anything further to do, or to submit, or to say in this process, it's simply informational.
And, yes, and I think that it's, this is an opportunity for us to continue to voice our opposition to these liquor store locations, and hopefully, the commission members will see that we're publicly on the record, still standing by our choice. So, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. And as I've stated before on this dais and in the community, I'm not in support of expanding liquor licenses, especially if we're over capacity, but, you know, for consistency, I think that if we're making allegations about not being in code and things like that, we need to have that documentation. So, I'm in support of this as well, but I agree with, you know, that I would encourage us to be consistent, you know, because when I pulled the information from Michigan Liquor Control, we have the highest volume liquor sales, it's not necessarily liquor stores, or smaller liquor stores, but if there's, we need to focus on enforcement of issues and violations, so that documentation is there to reinforce that we don't want this in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, Councilmember Brown. And what I would tell you is, we had a liquor store in one of the neighborhoods that I represent that, they had three failed stings, they had an LPD officer go to the hearing at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and these folks still are operating. It is very difficult to get a license revoked when it comes to these liquor stores. The other thing I will tell you, I'm not sure about the code issues, one of my concerns and what I hear in the community is, no matter what direction I go from my house, there's a liquor store, there's at least 10, I counted, that I can get beer, wine, or liquor within a five-minute walk from my house. I think my concern is the oversaturation, because we just had a liquor store open on Michigan Avenue next to the Meyer that sells liquor, and then, this one would have been an additional one on Michigan Avenue on top of the other ones that we already have, which is Speedway, Quality Dairy. It becomes a lot of liquor stores in just one area, and that's true of many of our corridors, whether that's Cedar Street, or MLK, or our neighborhoods for that matter. These liquor stores pop up, and, you know, one of the bigger frustrations is not just liquor, but it's the fact that when you go in and you take a look at these places, there is nothing healthy for those children in that neighborhood, and that's their food, where they get their food from, because there's many places that are still food deserts, and so, they leave with, you know, taki's and other MSG-filled snacks, and basically, these little barrel-looking things that are, I assume, some kind of sugar water, and that is incredibly frustrating, especially because we know how bad that is for children's diets. So, you know, that's...
Well, I agree 100%. I agree 100%. We're saying the same thing.
Yep.
That's why I'm just, I'm just clarifying exactly what you just said, I'm saying the exact same thing, especially from, in my community, sugar, diabetes, or those are issues, and as well as addiction, and those type of things that affect our families and our communities. And I've seen several people, friends, people who I went to school with, including family members, who have been challenged from, you know, these things being so saturated and so in proximity.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Do we have any further discussion on this? All right, we're going to move on to item G, resolution. I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I will, the hearing notice from Michigan Liquor Control Commission, the Vance UZP, Inc., for the denied request for transfer locations to 4700 Pleasant Grove Road and 1910 East Michigan Avenue, to be placed on file.
Okay, so we have a proper motion. I believe we have to do a motion on place on file, correct? Yep. Okay. So, proper motion in place, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose? Okay. We are on to item G, which is a resolution, opposition to liquor license transfer, 610 North Cedar in Mason, Michigan, to Liquor Express Lansing, Inc., 925 East Kalamazoo Street. For those that aren't familiar with that, that is the building they just redid on the corner of Pennsylvania and Kalamazoo. So, I will open the floor up to any discussion on this resolution. I suppose I'll take a crack at the background on this. I asked, requested this item be written. This location was sold by the previous owner who I had communicated with, and at the time, the understanding was, he'd like to see not a liquor store, but some kind of financial institution placed in there. Unfortunately, this property was sold, and immediately was set up for a liquor store. And again, this goes back to the same conversation we just had. Where this location is, you will be able to walk across the street to Quality Dairy and buy beer and wine, you'll be able to go right up the street to Eric's Two Blocks, there is another liquor store that opened on Michigan Avenue, you can walk, that's a block from this liquor store, and then there's Sunset Liquor Store, which is, I think, half a block away, and then Meyer, which is another block away, all serving liquor. I think that that is sufficient enough stores, and we did, I believe, receive emails from the Green Oaks neighborhood opposing the liquor store and supporting the resolution. Councilman Brown.
Yep, thank you. The way this is written, and based on the concern of oversaturation, I can support this.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on this? Councilman Jackson.
Just a question, so, let's say the transfer failed, would the liquor license stay at 610 North Cedar for the next establishment? And if we're looking at location, I mean, there's a lot of bad locations, I guess there's no good location, but I know 610 North Cedar's also not a good location, so would it stay or would it go?
The 610 North Cedars in Mason.
Oh, I was thinking about here, okay.
No, not here.
All right. Thank you.
Vice President Carter.
I do think that brings up a good point regarding location, so granted, this particular one is in Mason, but I think also, having those conversations, I know we had received communication that they had received a letter for this particular, the MLCC had received a letter for this particular objection, opposition for this transfer. I think we also need to include, because I did not see that letter, and I think there was some unclear, or there was some uncertainty on if this was on behalf of a council member or the body, but I think it also is important to indicate location when we are having those communications in support of denying some of these transfers. I think it's important for us to look at the logistics of our city of Lansing, and where those places currently are, and then anyone that are coming forward to understand the, that we are set at capacity for the city of Lansing. So, just wanted to keep that updated, too.
Thank you, Vice President Carter. Do we have any further debate? And, City Attorney Venker, with this liquor license, they've purchased this liquor license already, correct? I mean, that process is done?
I don't know that specifically. I know that they're requesting to transfer it into the jurisdiction. Typically, they will have purchased it, but I don't know at what point Liquor Control Commission signals us, and then, I mean...
So, it's basically just a license with this old address attached to it, they can take it anywhere?
Whoever owns it, correct? Whoever owns it, whether it's them, because I think this is a form of right aid, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, yes, if they own it, if they've completed the purchase, it's still their liquor license, they've got to get it into a jurisdiction somewhere, or keep it in Mason.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not totally familiar with the process of purchasing liquor licenses. Do we have any further questions? Okay. Vice President Carter.
I make a motion for the opposition to liquor license transfer from 610 North Cedar Street, Suite A, Mason, Michigan, to Liquor Express Lansing, Inc., 925 East Kalamazoo Street, Lansing, Michigan, 48912.
Okay, proper motions in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose? Passes unanimously. Okay, next we are on to closed session. Vice President Carter.
Yes, with pursuant to MCL 15.26A of the Opens Meeting Act, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state statute, specifically to discuss written material from the city attorney provided under attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product, and which is also exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act pursuant to MCL 15.243.
Okay.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Palavaglu?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Okay. All right. Committee of the whole is reconvening from our closed session, and the last item is to adjourn, which we are adjourned at 6:47.